Which is itself owned partly by the applicant. But this is the applicant trying to move forward, as I've said, with this land, rather than just let it fall into disuse. There's going to be a fall off at some stage in the future in HGV traffic in any event with this site, because part of the work that is undertaken there is MOT work. And I'm told that increasingly owners of lorries are moving such work, MOT and servicing, away from rural sites to locations near to motorways. So there's going to be a fall off in activity. And the last thing the community wants is to see a situation where this land is falls into disuse, when here there's an opportunity to create employment, new opportunities and development for the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Gregory. Much appreciated. Right, we have so far two questioners for Councilor Gregory. First of all, Councilor Gardiner.
Councilor Gregory, you made reference to a number of companies who had shown interest in occupying the units proposed. Would this be on, sorry, the upper or the lower parts of the site? Or do they not have a preference?
Well, the Cheshire Cheese, Councilor Gardiner, would be interested in the lower side, because that's where they're located. The others are in relation to the upper part. The intention being, without enlarging the answer in any way, but the intention of the applicant is to develop first the upper part of the quarry with these units. And then, as I understand it, the income which would fund those units and the upper quarry would then enable and drive the income to produce units in the lower quarry as well. The intention being to ultimately move away from the old sheds that you saw in the photographs in the lower quarry, I mean, replace them with the light industrial units. But to start with, they will be primarily in the upper quarry.
Okay, so thank you for telling me about Cheshire Cheese. But the other companies that you've listed, with one exception, all appear to be businesses that would normally be occupying some form of SAPs office type development, rather than a light industrial unit. Would you not concur with that?
Well, the list I've been provided with the applicant, I can give a bit more information on that. AM Bell Properties Limited, which had developed Unit E Upper Quarry as an agricultural building hay barn for storing agricultural equipment, the handling of rare breed sheep and livestock in conjunction with the adjoining field, also in ownership. Associated Steel Products will take Unit Two or Unit Six on the lower quarry for security spiral. Forgive me, I don't know what that is. Linkstod PSR will take Unit One or Unit Seven as the labour pool and management will be shared with a business, with ASPL, which is the Associated Steel Products. Harvey Bell Pension Investment, interested in the two adjoining units, which can either be the upper or lower quarry there. And then Britannia Security and Maintenance would wish to move their operations, looking at two adjoining units on again either the upper or lower quarry.
Okay, so you're not fully cognizant of what those businesses actually, how they operate, or what they would use these buildings for?
Part of the difficulty, councillor, is I understand that none of these businesses will give anything other than an indication of a letter of intent.
No, no, that's fine. I was just trying to establish the appropriateness of the companies relative to what's being provided. The second question is something you might be able to answer. At the moment, the upper state, there are references made to the fact that the site is used for the maintenance and MOT, for want of a better word, of HGV vehicles. Is that on the entirety of the site or just on part of it?
Just on the lower quarry, councillor.
Thank you very much. That's it, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Gardiner. Councilor Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, Councilor Gregory, you were right. You said you might be surprised to see local councillors supporting a development of this kind. I wrote that in the margin on the notes and I was interested in your comments. How would you respond though to the reasons that are given for refusal? There's three main ones. One of them is that it's not a permitted type of development in a rural location. Be interested in your response to that. And there's also a suggestion that there'd be significant detrimental impact on adjacent woodland, Goesworth Common, Whitemore Hill, Radcliffe Wood, local wildlife site. Obviously, yes, you'll support jobs and we all want to see work in particularly in rural areas as well, which are often overlooked. But there does appear from what we've got in front of us that there is significant environmental harm here. So I'd be interested in your answers to the one about the permitted type of development and also in terms of your views of the environmental impact of this potential development. Thank you.
I think, I think, councillor Williams, on the permitted development point, the fact is that this site has had planning permission for light industrial use since the 1960s and has been used by the Bell family since the 1970s for that similar use. And as you saw from the photograph, there have been large trailers parked on the upper quarry in any event. And in fact, when I visited the site last summer, there were still visibly some ramshackle buildings to the left of the site. So it's been there already in reality from that. So it's not accepted that this is not already a permitted development. I think that's my position on that. Sorry, what was your second question?
The second question was about the environmental impact, particularly in the same areas, Goesworth Common, Whitemore Hill and Radcliffe Wood.
Well, I, you know, I'm no expert on these matters, but again, a site visit would have helped because, you know, I'd been to the quarry. I went for a walk up Crokelane to have a look. What for me was interesting about it is that when you turn into the site and you saw the photograph from Mr Wakefield into the site entrance, you walked down the, you know, pretty muddy lane, surrounded by trees. And then you come into the upper quarry area, but with the greatest respect to the area, it's a piece of scruffy land. That's the reality of life. And I don't for a moment want to suggest that this isn't of importance. But I'm aware that the applicant has worked very hard in putting in place a mitigation scheme to actually enhance the area, because the applicant does own the surrounding farmland as well from that. So I'm struggling to understand how this development would create some harm to the local environment, weighing up all the different factors as to, you know, any potential risk of environmental harm compared with the, what I see and what the parish council of Sutton have said to be consistently for several months when discussing this with them, as the overall benefits to the local community of this particular proposal.
Okay, thanks for that. I'll ask the same question to the officers, because I'd be interested to hear their perspective on it as well as yours. Thank you very much, Councilor Gregory.
Councilor Redstone, I believe you have a question?
Thank you, Chair, yes. Councilor Gregory, what is the situation regarding employment on the site at present? How many people are employed there?
At the moment, I'm told that there are some 53 jobs involved at the moment.
Right. And if the site continued in the continuing use, how many would stay there? What is the prospect without any development?
Well, as I've said, Council Redstone, I think the problem is the longevity of the servicing of HGVs. I think that's the problem. I mean, in one sense, you can say, well, isn't it good news that there's going to be less HGVs in the community? We should be pleased about that. Yes. But on the other hand, there's a risk that then it just falls into some disrepair. The reality is, as I explained in my address, I'm told that the owners of these vehicles are much less interested in driving them to, you know, a rural site location to have them serviced and MOT done, where they can have the same done, you know, at a garage near to a motorway, which makes sense, doesn't it?
Yeah, of course it does. Okay. And is there evidence that this site has been in this kind of use since the 60s?
Well, that's my understanding, but I think you might be going to hear from another public speaker who can provide more commentary on the use of the site, councillor Redstone, shortly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Redstone. Councillor Jeffrey?
Thanks, Chair. Hi, councillor Gregory. Just a quick question. Are you aware of any other units closer to a settlement, probably Maccles? I don't know how far your ward of Sutton goes. Does it go beyond Lime Green, that sort of area?
It covers Lime Green as well, councillor Jeff.
Thanks. So are there, because I note in the officer's report that there are employment sites allocated, so LPS 13 and 12, in that sort of area. Are there, I don't know whether they've started developing those strategic sites yet, but are there existing sites where these businesses could go in a more sustainable area?
No, I'm not aware that there are. The officers will be, will no doubt correct me, because they'll know more about this than I am. I'm not aware that there are in my ward. There is, I should, if only just for completeness, I should mention that at the Langley Business, former business centre, where Seddon's, the house builder, has permission to develop a large number of new residential houses in Langley. Part of that permission allows for a number of light industrial units. It's only a small number, is my understanding. They've yet to be built and there are other matters under consideration in relation to that application at the moment, which is the subject of some considerable debate in the local media at the moment, councillor Jeffrey, which I won't, you know, bog this meeting down with discussions on. But suffice to say, my view on that, and I know that the parish council again agree with this, is there is some uncertainty about whether those units will actually ultimately be built. And in any event, there will be obviously some time lapse on when they do become available.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jeffrey, do you have a comeback?
I know, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no more questions for you, councillor Gregory. So if you'd like to switch your microphone and camera off?
I will. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much for your contribution. We can now move over to Hilda Gaddam. If you would like to switch your camera and microphone on and address the committee, you get three minutes.
Sorry, having problems with my camera. Is that now on? I don't know.
Yeah, we can hear and see you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for letting me speak. My name's Hilda Gaddam. I'm speaking to you today as a resident of some 45 years of Sutton, who represented the Sutton Ward for 20 years up to my retirement in May 2019, 10 on Macclesfield Borough Council and 10 on Cheshire East. I fully support this application and very much hope the Strategic Planning Board will approve it. During all my time in Sutton, Bells were always a very well-owned and managed site, and as things changed over the years, adapted the old quarry accordingly, hence the site, a site for the plastic extrusion company and the addition of Cheshire Cheese. The lower quarry goes back a very, very long way and cannot be seen from the road. The parish of Sutton has lost several employment sites in recent years. The largest was the site in Langley, which had traditionally had a silk mill from Brockler's western days, and then Rita Scraggs, followed by Hardings. Although the site is under development, it's almost all the housing, and as councillor Gregory has just said, just a few business units, but it's all taking a very long time and has, not has begun, but very, very slowly, having had permission for quite a while. Langley also lost the large screen printers site, which again is being used for housing. Down the road, outside the parish of Sutton, but this side of Macclesfield, the large Stevens site on Gunco Lane has gone and been turned into housing. Where therefore are the jobs of the future to come from? It seems vital that sites such as the one you are considering today should come forward to enable people to build up small businesses in the future. Without doubt, when the worst effects of the pandemic are over, much of the country will be changed and many firms will be gone forever. This makes it even more important that enterprising people with good ideas have somewhere to start up and develop a business as it grows. This site would be ideal for such a purpose and would be an ideal way to use a former quarry. As councillor Gregory has said, it's not a very attractive area and indeed there aren't any houses between, on the road between the lower quarry and the upper quarry. And I believe it really could benefit enormously and it would be an ideal way to use a former quarry. We're going to need to have much more employment. So that's why I very much hope the Strategic Planning Board will feel able to support the Northern Planning Committee's original approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mrs Gaddam. Do we have any questions for Mrs Gaddam? No, Mrs Gaddam, if you could switch your microphone and camera off?
Of course. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Alison Freeman, who is the agent for the applicant. If you could address the board, you have 1.5 minutes. I've not had a 1.5 before.
Okay, I thought my client was going to speak first, but if that's okay, I'll go then. Okay. Members, this job creating application was supported by the Northern Planning Committee, which recognised just how important the development is, not just to our client's existing businesses on the site and those of his tenants on the site he wished to expand, but also to Sutton and the borough. We don't consider this application to be a departure. Both areas fall within a long-established and lawful industrial estate since 1963. Its improvement and expansion complies with policy PG 6.3.5 being essential, policy EG 2.1, 3 and 5, and paragraphs 11.18, 19 and 20. Even if it was a departure, members will be aware that the more up-to-date 2019 framework policies totally now support development for economic purposes in rural areas. And I did ask Mr Wakefield at the Northern Committee to read out paragraphs 83 and 84, as they should prevail, as is required under section 38 when making a decision. Sadly, that update hasn't been supplied to members. But if this application is not an essential one under PG 6, I don't know what would be. I ask members to support the Northern Planning Committee's resolution and I can answer any queries, including ecology.
Thank you very much. We now go to questions. So the first person to ask a question, Miss Stuart is councillor Gardiner.
Mrs Freeman, you make reference to the fact that this site is a lawful industrial estate. And I note from the report we've been provided with and the photographs that we have been shown today, that there are significant structures on the lower part of the site, which will clearly confirm your assertion. However, when we look at the photographs of the upper site, the only thing we can see are predominantly is an area of hard standing on which there are vehicles parked and a very small shed type structure. So would it be correct to say that while a planning permission may have been granted in 1963, I think it was, for the industrial use of this former quarry, in actuality, only the lower part of the site has ever been actively employed in such uses and that the upper part of the site is only ever being used ancillary to industrial uses, so for parking or for perhaps some storage, but for no other reasons. It's not actively used for any industrial uses per se. That's all I'm asking, please.
Okay. No, in fact, the planning unit, as was established in 1963 to Buckens, was for the whole of the site. And that only had a very unusual planning condition, that all you had to then do, once occupied, was if you wanted any more buildings, is to submit details. So the overall planning unit is the whole. And in fact, originally, there was a direct link between the lower and the upper sites. The upper site was actually used some years ago as a concrete batching plant. It has been used consistently since then for the parking of trailers, but the HGVs bringing them up. And it did historically have buildings. So no, it's not ancillary to the lower quarry, because it is a single planning unit and therefore those uses can take place within the whole. Similarly, historically, we have shown and provided a great deal of evidence that in its own right, in any event, it has been used for commercial use, but it is part and parcel of the single entity.
So when you say it was used for a concrete batching site, is this actually an activity that took place on the upper part of the part of the site? It wasn't ancillary, is that what you're saying?
That's right, it was not ancillary. No, 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 they were all perfectly lawful, legitimate uses.
Now, I'm not suggesting it's anything unlawful or legitimate. I'm merely trying to establish whether or not there was active use of the upper area for commercial purposes or whether it was merely just used for parking.
It was for commercial purposes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Gardiner. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mrs Freeman, for offering to answer questions. I've got two, two quick ones. We seem to be of an impasse here. We're being told that it is compliant with PG 6 and the officers are saying otherwise. Who's correct?
I'd like to say that I am, but hopefully now that, well, Mr Malcolm and Mr Wakefield have been appraised more fully again of the position, policy PG 6, which is the open countryside, the exception, one of the exceptions is on existing employment sites, yeah, you can have development that is essential for the expansion or redevelopment of an existing business. Well, that would fall squarely within that policy. And similarly, the policy for the rural economy under policy EG 2 has a number of elements, which is provide opportunities for local rural employment developments that support the vitality of rural settlements, which obviously this does in its own right, local spending power. You encourage the retention and expansion of existing businesses. That's point three. And then beyond the local plan, you then go, of course, as you know, to the framework, which in 2019 significantly changed the policy approach that one, the decision maker is guided to take to encourage rural businesses. And it quite clearly says even where they're not in particularly sustainable locations.
Okay. My show.
Question?
A second question is the ecological one, and specifically, if you could concentrate on the areas I named in the question to councillor Gregory, which is Goesworth Common and the woods there that are listed in the, in the report.
Yes, absolutely. When we first applied, we had not at that time offered any mitigation, because we weren't aware that this was going to be raised as a matter for consideration. The area, as councillor Gregory ties described, the area is a lawful area where parking has taken place, storage, and that area could be changed at any time. And that's where this scrub is. And that scrub developed from where there'd been some informal tipping. But we took that on board fully. And what we've done is we've now created and dedicated a very large area, new area of semi-improved grassland that's going to be created. Soil testing has been done. We understand that it's now supported, I don't, I haven't had it clarified, by the council's ecologist, but the policy itself, policy SE 3, biodiversity and geodiversity point four, does identify that areas of this tier, because this is the, I think it's the third tier of ecological classifications, that does allow development, if it outweighs the impact of, sorry, it does allow developments if we have fully embraced, as we have done, successful and significant mitigation, which we believe we've done. In terms of the impact on trees, there are some small scrub trees close to the back of some of the units and that they would have to be trimmed back. But we are offering significant mitigation with additional planting.
Okay. All right, could I just ask a bit of clarification on your answers there? I will also ask the same question to the officers if I can. You've given a very comprehensive answer there about in terms of the actual site itself. And it's clear from the photographs that Mr Wakefield showed us that, you know, it's a scrubby, you know, industrial site within woodland. Am I right in my interpretation of what I'm seeing in the report is that Goesworth Common, Whitemore Hill and Radcliffe Wood, local wildlife site, are they actually adjacent to this site or part of it? Were they in relation to the area that's being developed?
I believe they are adjacent. Perhaps Mr Wakefield can clarify, because the actual site itself, our site edge red, is confined to the site, which is entirely hard standing or scrubby hard standing.
Okay, in which case I will ask further questions to the officers about what the significant harm that might result would be, because clearly you can only talk about the actual site, purly itself. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Williams. Councillor Redstone?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, the client's representative has answered my question. I wanted to know if the development was entirely on areas of hard standing. And she's just confirmed that it is. So I have no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Redstone. Any more questions? Miss Freeman, thank you very much. If you could switch your microphone off, we will now move to the applicant, which is Mr Bell. If Mr Bell could address the committee, you also have 1.5 minutes. Mr Bell?
Mr Bell? Hello, can you hear and see me?
I can hear you. I can see you now. There we go. If you would like to address the committee, you have one and a half minutes.
Members of the committee and Chair, I'll try to be brief, although some of what I'm going to say has been said before. My name is Stephen Bell and I'm a director of AM Bell Properties, the family business owning the site. I live in Hawkeshead House on the site. I also own Associated Steel Products, a business manufacturing specialist, concrete security reinforcement. Although this business is based in the quarry, we are currently forced to manufacture from rented premises in Wigan, as we have no industrial space available in Sutton. The family business purchased Hawkeshead in 1973 as one site of roughly nine acres, all with the benefit of industrial planning permission. Since this time, we have purchased land around our boundaries to insulate us from the surrounding woodlands. The family business purchase 2021 will be our 48th year as owner, operator and occupier of the site as a single entity. We made pre-application for the development nearly four years ago and received a very favourable response. We made our application in full consultation with the parish council and our immediate neighbours, following the revised national planning framework. At its peak, our site generated nearly 100 local jobs in the 70s and 80s, all based around heavy goods vehicle operations. We regularly moved over 1,000 tonnes of freight each day. As the UK economy has changed, we have moved away from HGV-based activity, developing and modifying the site diversely to ensure our future. We now seek to expand the built industrial property on the site to allow ourselves, our existing tenants and connected local businesses to grow and develop. We have pre-let subject to the planning application five new units, as you've heard. This business model will give further growth and employment on the site, ultimately generating circa 51 new jobs, in addition to the 32 people currently employed.
Right, Mr Bell, you've had two minutes there, I'm afraid, so I need to draw that to a close. I do apologize, but it is, you were given one and a half and I've allowed it to go to two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr Bell? No, okay, Mr Bell, if you could switch your microphone and your camera off, that would be fantastic. Oh, hang on, one second. One second, Mr Bell. Councillor Redstone has a question for you.
Uh, Mr Bell, um if you were successfully in gaining this permission from the committee today, when would you start redeveloping the site?
Conceivably, we've, we've got the funding in place to do at least the five units um starting now. So we, we'd be aiming to start that eminently. But this is really a long-term proposal for us. We need to lay out strategically what the site is going to look like, both for existing tenants and new customers coming onto the site. And we need to have infrastructure in terms of improvements to drains, lighting, security in place. And it's only viable to do that if we know what the total scheme is going to be. We can't do this incrementally. Um, it, 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 it just isn't, it isn't, isn't viable to work it that way.
No, I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Redstone. Um, there's nobody else indicating any que- oh, hang on, councillor Williams.
Sorry, Chair, um my fingers are quicker than my brain. Uh, the question's for the officers, not for Mr Bell.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll move to that one now. Mr Bell, if you could switch your microphone and camera off.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for your time, it's much appreciated. Now. Paul, do you wish to come back on any of the questions or points raised during the public speakers?
One point of clarification, if I may, Chairman, um about the local wildlife site, just, just if you can just share my screen, hopefully I can show members where it's located.
We can see the map. Yeah, we can see the map, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're there.
Yeah, so the um, the application site, you can, well, you can see the lower quarry hopefully in this darker um, where, where the buildings are centrally positioned within the map. And then anyway, the yellow area, the, the yellow shaded area is the extent of the local wildlife site. So the application site lies at the very northern edge of the local wildlife site and the, with the majority of it being down towards the south. So i- if you like, the local wildlife site washes over the application site in its entirety. Is that, does that help explain the extent of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, great, okay.
But actually, Paul, is there actually a connection between the two sites?
No, I think Mrs Freeman said, excuse me, I think previously there may have been, but not now, that there isn't a connection at all, no. So they're, they're access from two separate, separate ends. Uh, whether some pedestrian access could be facilitated with steps or something like that, I'm not entirely sure, but it doesn't currently exist anyway.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
But other, other than that, nothing further at the moment.
Okay, uh, Mr Malcolm, do you have anything to add to the questions that were raised through the, the public question, the public speakers?
Yeah, I think it's probably just to pick up some of the points of clarification. I think if they're not questions that are on, about to be asked, they, they, they were certainly raised about. Lot of ta- lot of talk about the differences between the um, the upper level and the, and the lower level. And I think also just in terms of the policy position. Um, and you'll see on pages, I think it's fifty-one, sorry, no, it's actually pages. Yeah, bottom of page fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, which actually goes on to fifty-four, we've included quite a detailed applicant submission, which gives you the uh, the background information and also clarifies on page fifty-three the, the, the respective paragraphs of the MPPF, paragraph eighty-three and eighty-four that was referred to by uh, it's Freeman. Um, I think in terms of the reason why we have this sort of slight debate between um, and the position, um, I don't think anybody's necessarily debating the, the lower level. Um, it's clearly an established use, it has had for some time, so I don't think from an officer perspective, we would be able to resist that. And I think, given what's been said, that could quite happily satisfy some of the policies in terms of expansion of existing uh, employment sites. The, the main concern, just for clarity for members, is, is the upper level. Um, and while there is talk of the historic um position and perhaps there's a, there's a consent from nineteen sixty-three, um, there is clearly some, some contention over that between professional officers. Uh, and therefore the normal way to establish if it does actually have that use would be to submit a certificate of lawfulness to establish that piece of land, what the, what the lawful use of that land is, given that we're talking about something that's now getting on for nearly fifty, sixty years ago. So I think, you know, I think just to, to, to clarify for members, I don't think um, if this was submitted just for the lower level, that we'd probably find um much objection from officers, we'd clearly have to go through the details of it. It, it's the upper level that is the, the main point of contention. Um, notwithstanding all the issues about sustainability and location, yeah, we would have to accept that there is established employment at, at this site. Um, so I think, you know, just to pick up that point, which was obviously raised by speakers that, um, you know, so we're not, not against the, the, the principle of all of this. Um, but actually it's just that upper level. Uh, and clearly in terms of that upper level, that's where we also have the, probably the greatest harm in terms of the local wildlife site. So what you have is effectively a, because of the way the application's been submitted, I suppose you have the full weight of officers disagreeing with the proposal because of, that's the way it's been submitted. Um, and while I take the points that's been made, it is clearly two distinct sites, we're going to have two different access points for one as well. So, so yeah, I think it, it, just to sort of put it in the context, it, we, we're not unsympathetic to this application. But in the way it's been submitted, we, we feel we don't have any option other than to recommend it for, for refusal. And I suppose in terms of, you know, that's, that's the debate for members to, to, to have, but I think it's just useful to inform members' discussions and, and debate going forward. So um, hopefully that provided a little bit of clarification, Chair, before um other questions might come forward.
Thank you very much, David. Right, well, we'll go to questions to officers. Do we have any questions to the officers? Does anybody wish to raise a question? Okay, councillor Jeff, uh councillor Hockburn first.
In, in the report, uh it states, the officers state that should the committee be minded to approve, that so one of the conditions, there's condition four, talks about works on the upper quarry shall be undertaken in accordance with landscaping proposals, plan and so forth. Um, which kind of suggests to me that, that, that uh maybe planning officers, um, well, obviously a kind of playing the percentages, if you like, giving, giving us the options, I think is a better way of putting it. Um, those works on the upper quarry, would that be sufficient uh in the minds of officers to make this uh, the, the doubts about the upper quarry, the upper site? Um, would it be sufficient to ease those concerns and to deal with them? Um, would there be other conditions that might help alleviate those planning concerns?
Chair, I'll perhaps just, sorry, just maybe just pick up the theme. Um, and maybe just hit it head on. Don't take the fact that we've given a set of conditions as anything other than um there if members need them, because Northern Committee recommended this for, or they resolved to recommend for approval. Um, my, from my perspective, this is a refusal. Um, but obviously, you know, it's appropriate, given how this has been, uh, if you effectively referred up to um strategic planning board because of its, we, we do feel it's a strategic um nature and a significant departure because of the the, the, the sort of the, the open countryside nature. There were many other sites that are, um, you, you could consider to be of a similar nature. Um, and what we wouldn't want to do is start putting lots of employment sites in, in open countryside when effectively we are having sites that will be coming forward through planned um sites through the, through the Cheshire East local plan. That isn't to say there won't be some smaller sites coming forward to, to support the rural, uh rural areas as, as appropriate to policy. So I think, I, I think the answer to councillor Hockman is that what we've done is we've, we've put conditions in place. If members are so inclined to um, to support the application, then clearly we have to um do what we can. Uh, and that's why you've got a set of conditions there. So I think it's a bit tricky for us to say, do we think that would overcome um the concerns? Well, actually, no, it's not tricky to say, would it overcome concerns? From an office's point of view, it wouldn't overcome concerns. But if members are minded to, then effectively that would be our, our best way of mitigating the, the impact. Um, so they are there to make sure that if the development is supported by members, that we make the best job of it we can. And, and that's why you've got quite, there's a quite an extensive list of conditions there as well. So um, I hope that kind of answers it for you, councillor Hockman, in terms of um, in the round, shall we say.
Councillor Hockman?
I, I think, but probably does, I, because I'm, I'm assuming that although planning members are very, very um skillful people, I still think that the twenty-seven conditions must have been suggested, obviously, and presumably these were the conditions that Northern Planning um finished up um putting forward. Um, so they are, they have the benefit of professional um input. I've got, I suppose I've got another, a separate question, but it, it may, you may dismiss it or may not be able to answer, I don't know. Um. Would it be better, or would it have been better? If, well, yeah, if it's, this is a long-term um proposal. Um, so would it be better if actually the two sites were the subject of separate applications?
Um, well, as I've just indicated, I suppose, like I said, the, the, the lower site, um, we, we're pretty much saying, I mean, obviously, you would have to go through the detail of it, but we're pretty much saying that the lower site is going to be probably acceptable. Um, it's the upper site that causes us the biggest concern. And we've still got local wildlife site issues to, to, to address and, but I, I suppose, um, yes, there's more likelihood if they, if the applications were split, then we might be supporting one and uh, well, recommending one for approval and recommending one for a refusal. And that's what I'm saying in terms of it's the upper area that gives us the biggest difficulties. And I suppose in terms of the way the application is presented, it feels a little strange to me why we've not come in with the detailed application for the lower site because it feels like that's the one that's readily and, and, you know, already has business that are willing to expand. We heard from people that want to expand on the site already. And actually that would fit reasonably well with policy. And yet, that's the one that is the outline part of the site. So they want to develop the, the, the upper site with the detailed stuff first, which is actually the more contentious one to, to develop. Um, so just, it, it feels a little bit the wrong way around for me in terms of um how we, how we approach the, the, the sort of the way it's been, we've been put together. Um, now, there, there may be reasons for it. I, I can think of some reasons why they might have done that, but, you know, it just feels that um, if we're trying to make this as easy as possible and, and, and move on with um supporting the investment that um, that the applicant wants to do, then we, we could have had the option to sort of get something going quite soon. But obviously, I mean, ultimately, this is, you know, we, we are presenting this to members with, with all the information they need to, to, to reach a, a, an outcome. Um, and that's why you've got the conditions on there as well. So we don't spend, if members are minded to, we don't then, then spend half an hour rattling through conditions. And so just to complete the point, um, they have had a professional eye on them. I'm not sure they ever actually got presented to, to Northern Committee because obviously it would be referred upwards. So what we've done here is, is if you actually said, look, here's a set of conditions, should members be minded to support the, the application, these are the conditions that we would want to be imposed.
Just, just sort of a, a question linked with all of this. You know, it's perfect, it's clear that a permission was granted fifty-seven years ago, you know, back in nineteen sixty-three. Um, for, uh, for, for light industry use. Uh, and that didn't differentiate as far as one knows between the two sites, did it? So I, I know that's fifty-seven years ago and a lot may have happened in the meantime.
I think, I think just councillor Hockman, sorry, I think that's the point where I, I suppose it's from an officer's perspective at the moment, we're not, you know, we're not completely sure. Um, and, and that's why um it, it's clearly something the, the applicants have submitted, I think, uh, during the sort of the application process. Um, and as I said, there, there is a, there is a formal process to, um, to clarify that in, in, in planning terms legally. Uh, and the normal approach, if there is some contention over it or some debate, is to look at that evidence separately, both in terms of any evidence that may be from historical records, evidence from the applicant, evidence the council might have in terms of what the use of that land has been, particularly given the length of time. Um, so, you know, it, it may be something that comes forward and says, well, okay, yes, it has been demonstrated, but at the moment, um, officers have some concern that it hasn't. Hence the reason why we, we've, we've got this um contrary to, to, to policy um approach.
Thank you very much. Councillor, I take it that's, you're okay now then, councillor Hockman?
Yes, uh, yes, thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I think for, for me, one of the key things about this is well, um, is pol- policy PG six and whether it does fall into one of those exceptions. Now, Mrs Freeman was quite clear that it, it falls under the exception. Um, that uh it falls under development that is essential for the expansion or redevelopment of an existing business. I was just wondering if Paul could um explain his rationale for saying it doesn't fall under that. Um.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, I, I think, like Davey's touched on really, I think it, it's the ext- the way in which the application's been presented hasn't been the clearest. And so the, you know, we've got a list of companies from councillor Gregory at the start when he was speaking, where, um, well, we, we, I, I, as far as I'm aware, we've not seen this list before. Some of them were referred to, but the list of, of this extent wasn't. So we, we didn't really know with any, any certainty in terms of who is looking at occupying these buildings. Um, so that kind of removed any possibility was being able to conclude that it's essential for an existing bus- rural business that they need to be located on this particular site. So um, it was a relatively straightforward um assessment of PG six. And, and I agree, it's, it, it's a key part of the, of the propos- of, of the assessment of the proposal PG six. Um, and again, to officers' minds, the information's just not there to demonstrate that that essential, um, just bear with me, that the development is essential for the expansion or redevelopment of an existing business um on the extent proposed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Paul. Councillor Jeffrey, do you want to come back or can we move on?
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much. We now have councillor Williams. Councillor Williams.
I'm not sure whether my question's more for the debate than, than here, because um it does seem to me.
Councillor Williams, you can open the debate if you so will.
Um, if, if, if that's what I like with members and with the chair, then I would very much like to do that if I can.
Perfectly fine, I will accept that. You can open the debate. Please go ahead.
Okay, it seems to me, uh, and I'm not sort of saying this in any recriminatory way, that we've, we've got people speaking at cross purposes and talking past each other to a certain extent. And I think that's probably why they're, they're sort of um uh seem to be sort of an anomalies between um what the applicants and the um local representatives are saying and, and the officers' view, which is a bit different. I think what we've got here is very complicated, isn't it? Because the, the wildlife site goes across the whole of the area, so it's within that. So any development is, is potentially going to um either be detrimental or improve it. But I am struck by what Mr Bell said, that at pre-application stage, it was quite, um, it appears to have been quite positively received. Um, clearly since then, um, there's been some kind of divergence. I'm not trying to make up history and find out why that was, but I'd have thought that the, has there been guidance given in, in terms of how to present a case like this and how to present um applications? Because I do think um we are looking at two separate sites here. And, uh, you know, which perhaps ought to be tackled in a different kind of a way. Um, I think the other issue I think we need to be mindful of is, um, how can I put it? You're this, the sort of legal, I mean, semantic side of things with, with sites and paragraphs and things, but you know, we are talking about an area within um a, a site which has got a considerable ecological value, but there does seem to have been steps taken in the past, as Mr Bell said, to build buffers around that. And that it doesn't strike me that the, um, the existing businesses- And it doesn't strike me that the existing businesses on the site are doing anything particularly detrimental or encroaching on the woodland in any way, if anything, they're looking to mitigate that. So I can see, I can see both sides on this. It seems to me that we've got a very well-meaning application, if I can put it that way, about developing an existing business as established family business, something that's historically employed a lot of local people in the past and could potentially do so in future. And I think there's got to be some way of reconciling those, that legitimate, if you like, and applaudable aspiration with the ecological ones. I'd be interested to hear a little bit more perhaps on potential damage, what that might be. We've heard a harm mentioned in there, but I don't see any great specifics as to what that would, that would involve, or whether that's just within the areas on the map that's enclosed in the, you know, the thick lines that I've got on the map in front of me, or whether it would impinge on other parts of woodland or adjacent parts of the site. I'm still a little bit unclear about that. But I think what we, summing up, I think what we're looking at is a well-meaning application, but with a certain amount of things being at cross purposes for one reason or another. And what I would like to see is some kind of resolution achieved between those, if that makes sense.
Thank you very much, councillor Williams. Councillor Gardner?
Councillor Williams' wishes could be easily resolved if this application were to be withdrawn by the applicant and them to submit two separate applications, one for a certificate of lawful use or development relating to the upper part of the site, which I remain unconvinced has ever been actively used for commercial purposes beyond those ancillary to the use of the lower site. And the lower site becomes a subject of a full application, so we can fully assess not only what's being proposed, but its impact on the wider ecological site, sorry, ecologically proficient site. So we note the value of the site ecologically, and therefore we should be particularly careful about what is proposed within its confines, and that does include the entire site. The issue with regard to the expansion of existing businesses, I think it should be clear that that means existing business operations, not the owner of the site's aspirations. Because otherwise, if a house builder were to have sited their offices within a country park, which is not unheard of, the bigger house builders often do that because they like to have the wonderful environment to work in, they could potentially then have argued that an expansion of their business would be to build a housing estate around that house. And that quite clearly is not the purpose of either the governments or any policy documents that relate to that. For instance, one of the businesses named, the Cheshire Cheese, wanted to relocate. That does fall within the terminology of a requirement to expand their existing operations. But it doesn't mean that an existing business can come from elsewhere and relocate on this site to fulfil that obligation. Similarly, the applicants have made reference to their own construction-related business and how they have to undertake those works in Wigan. Obviously, if they were proposing to expand their business on this site, that would fall within that category. But the proposal as it stands, to create a number of small starter units, does not comply with the specifications that would facilitate an expansion of this businesses within the rural location. Furthermore, let us remember that this site is within spitting distance of the edge of Macclesfield and that the people who come to work at this site will themselves predominantly come from the Macclesfield location. It is not the same as where you have an isolated village and you are looking to create a work facility within those areas. Much as we like to lord our rural hinterlands, we don't have many, and certainly Sutton is not one of them, isolated villages that would constitute, require employment because there is no source of employment elsewhere. We are talking about the Yorkshire moors, the middle of the Derbyshire Dales, where effectively villages have not grown much over the years. And in order to ensure there is employment for the people who work there, and they haven't got to travel miles to work, there should be employment opportunities near to their homes. There are employment opportunities near to these people's homes. They are in Macclesfield. There are a number of sites allocated, both in the local plan and through the SAD PD, that we will be proposing for new commercial industrial sites within the next 10 to 15 years. And even if we grant permission for this today, we can't guarantee that these units will be built any sooner than other sites. So I'm not convinced that the benefits of creating jobs on this site outweigh the harm. And the harm is there intrinsically, councillor Williams. If you are trying to do, if you develop something in an area which has ecological recognition, if you put something that's not akin to the ecology, then that in itself is harmful. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Gardner. Councillor Farrell?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a bit of insight, I obviously live quite close to this. And I actually used to run past this site regularly, past full knocking up Old League Road. And until this application, I wasn't even aware this site existed, to be honest. It's very well insulated and isolated from view. Maybe I was distracted by the incline of Old League Road, I don't know, but I never noticed it before. However, I do agree that in terms of, if this was an application to for the expansion of existing companies that are using the site, and it is an existing hard-standing site. And if this was an application for the expansion of the existing companies that are using the site, I'd be minded to approve it. But as it stands as introducing new starter units, I feel that within the strategic plan for the area, then there are better sites, more strategic sites allocated for that. So, yeah, if it was for the expansion of the existing companies on the site, then I think that would be a fair way to go to approve it with the listed conditions. However, if it's for new starter units, I just don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Farrell. Councillor Redstone?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I don't know where to begin really with this application. I've asked, I asked the applicant and I asked the applicant's agent, and it seems quite clear to me that this whole site has planning permission for industrial use. It seems clear from the list of approvals that were given for this site over the years that it has been in continuous use, that the whole of the site has been used. I believe them when they say that the whole site was given permission back in 1963. They seem honest and decent people. They have the approval of the parish council. They have the support of their ward councillor. I can find nothing wrong with this application. If you look at the ecology of it, you looked at those photographs. What we're seeing is an area of open ground which has got a concrete base. Now, I find it laughable that you suggest that that has got much ecological value. It's ridiculous. If you say that this is against local plan, every time we see an application, there are, I bring up the fact that that application does not conform with the local plan. And every time, nothing is done about it. So why should we take this site and treat it as an exception? I do support this site, partly because I come from a rural ward. And I would say that if somebody said to me, I've got a site that I could turn, I can provide you with 51 new jobs, I would bite their hand off to try and get them to come. And it's all very well, you want to have a look at the ins and the outs of it. But this is the true facts of the matter. This has got local support, it's got history, and I think we should approve it and just get on with it.
Thank you, councillor Redstone. We now move to councillor Jeffrey.
Thanks, Chair. I think the true facts of this is that it's contrary to policies that have been put in place by the Cheshire East Local Plan Strategy to ensure that such developments are managed in a sustainable way. And the way, the way I see it is that there are units available or coming available in a similar sort of timescale to this one probably in Macclesfield, which some of these jobs will be relocated to. Because if I lived in Macclesfield, where I suspect most of the employees live, I would prefer to live somewhere like Lime Green, where I could walk or cycle to, rather than go to a job further out of town, which there's probably one bus an hour that goes from Macclesfield to Leake, I would suspect. So I think, and I say it's unsustainable, because they've already said, the ward councillor, et cetera, that the current business, the HGVs, are moving to locations closer to where their operations are. Now, why wouldn't, in the future, if that's the way we're moving, the light industrial uses, they'll want to be in more sustainable locations next to where their customers and suppliers are, i.e. closer to Macclesfield. So I don't think that kind of stands up either. And I think it's essentially just a speculative application to build a small industrial park outside the allocations in the local plan. So I don't think I can support this. And that's ignoring the ecological things, which I'm big on as well. So I don't, I don't, I can't support this application, I'm afraid.
Thank you very much, councillor Jeffrey. I am very mindful that councillor Gardner did offer a way forward on this, if the applicant would be minded to proceed with that way forward, where they split the site into two and we look for the certificate of lawfulness. David, would that be, could we find anything out on that? No? Councillor Gardner?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I don't believe at this stage in proceedings that is acceptable. As the application appears on agenda, we are required to make a decision. The most we could do is to defer the decision to facilitate that. However, given the majority position that's been evident from the conversations so far, I would like to propose that we go with the officer recommendation to refuse for the reasons set out in the agenda papers.
Okay. Councillor, sorry, Mr Malcolm, would you like to just give us a little bit of information and clarification on if a refusal would be and we can split it? Or would it have to be new applications?
I think unfortunately in this instance, Chair, it would probably have to be a new application. I mean, I think officers have tried to be sort of, you know, tried to work with the applicant a little bit to try and see the way of perhaps getting something approved here. And I think I alluded to that in my comments earlier. So, you know, I think it's probably that we do refuse this application if that's what members wish to do. But there probably is a conversation that we then can have with the applicant and their agents to say, well, actually, there is potential here. And I think certainly, as was alluded to, you know, if we have got existing businesses on there that are being expanded, then, you know, there will be something there that's in compliance with policy. And I do go back to what I said about the lower site as well. So I think unfortunately, I think it's going to be difficult to defer and sort of split what we've got, because it is a comprehensive scheme, and I accept what's been submitted. But I guess what it would do is, if it was refused, that would leave that open for the applicants to appeal that, the applicants to appeal that application. And while in the meantime, we could look at new applications that may alleviate some of the concerns that we've raised. So I think, yeah, I think to progress with a refusal, as I think councillor Gardner has alluded to. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm just, I'm just really mindful that I want to try and come to a satisfactory outcome between applicant committee and the local parish council. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yes, Chair, happy to second councillor Gardner's proposal.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a proposer for the recommendation of refusal. We have a seconder. I think we should go to the vote unless anybody else wishes to speak in the debate. No, okay, we will take the vote. So the vote is for to accept recommendation of refusal. We will start off with councillor Critchley for, against, has he gone? Okay, so councillor Critchley's off the list. Councillor Edgar, for, against, not voting?
Regretfully, I'm for the refusal.
Okay, councillor Farrell?
Yeah, just this time for the refusal.
Refusal, okay. Councillor Gardner?
For refusal.
Thank you. Councillor Hockburn?
Against refusal.
Councillor Jeffrey?
For.
Councillor Morton?
Refusal.
Councillor Redstone?
Against refusal.
Councillor Weatherill? Councillor Weatherill, are you with us, councillor Weatherill? Have we lost you?
She's on mute, Chairman.
You're on mute, councillor Weatherill?
I'm going to go to councillor Williams.
Yeah, councillor Williams will come back to councillor Weatherill. Councillor Williams?
I am pretty torn on this one, but I will vote for the refusal.
Thank you. And if we can go back to councillor Weatherill?
She's in the meeting, Chairman, but I'm not sure she can hear us, so I'm abstaining if we can't get in contact.
Okay, we'll just, I'll just give her another try. I'll just...
For refusal, Mr Chairman?
Thank you very much, councillor Weatherill. Okay. No, I'll vote for refusal. So that's 18 for the recommendation of refusal and two against that motion, Chair. Thank you very much. I propose now to have a five-minute break, well, 10-minute break, to have a comfort break. So we will resume at 14, well, quarter past.
Mr Chairman, before you do so, I'm afraid I'm going to have to give my apologies from here on in because I have another meeting that I have to be in at quarter past three. So good luck with the remainder of the meeting. And I'm sorry, but obviously the delay earlier on today has caused me this logjam of meetings.
I do regret that, councillor Gardner.
It's no one's fault, it's just that I can't be in two places at once. And I don't want to prejudice my position within this meeting, given its pseudo-legal status.
Thank you very much, councillor Gardner.
Mr Chairman?
Yes, councillor Weatherill?
I too have an appointment at half past three, which I must keep.
Okay.
I'm afraid I shall be leaving. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you very much, councillor Weatherill, for your participation. Thank you very much. Okay, so back at quarter past. I need a wee. Hang on, let me just... Proposed continued use of construction compound, including associated access, car parking, construction, vehicle storage, porter cabins and other associated works. Constant compound south of Lim Road, Little Bollington, for Guilford Try, Belford Beatty and Tatten. I now ask Adrian Crowder to present the item. Adrian, over to you.
Thank you Chair. Good afternoon, members. Right. Share the screen. Can you just confirm you can see that, Chair?
No.
Right, I'll try something else.
Yeah, we're there now, Mr Crowder, we're there.
Perfect. Okay, members. Okay, so, members, this is an application basically to change two conditions, as it says in the title, attached to an approval granted by Strategic Planning Board back in 2018 for the continued use of this compound. I won't use the word Costain because Costain were the original contractors for this site, but it's a compound off Lim Road, just off the Bowden Roundabout, at the edge of Little Bollington. So moving along. Okay, so for those members that aren't familiar with the area, this is the Bowden Roundabout. So this is the main roundabout at the southern end of the Old Tringham area. So effectively the river Bollin here is the border between Trafford, which lies to the north, and Cheshire East, which lies to the south. So the whole of this site and the immediate area is within Cheshire East, but clearly the Trafford border is very close on the northern boundary. We then have the 556, which is this newly constructed road that swings around to the south of the site here on this curve. And then we have the various road network that gives the linkages off the 556 and the M56, which I'll come on to shortly. And this photograph shows the compound as it was, I'm guessing probably about two years ago now. I can't be precise, members. There isn't a date on the actual photograph. So just to give you sort of rough, you see it's basically set within open countryside. And it's said in the report, well, there is a woodland belt that sits on the northern boundary along here, which sits on the sort of the top of the slope that leads down to the river Bollin in the distance. Okay, so this slide shows you basically the extent of the smart motorway work. So again, members, this is the 556, swings around and joins on to the M56, which is the motor that runs east-west in this location. The smart motorway works start effectively where the two junctions meet. So at this point here, and they finish basically at the edge of Manchester Airport, which you can see clearly on this sign here. So basically that is the extent of the smart motorway works. And you can see how well located this compound site is to service the works. And as it's set out in the reports, obviously the works are going on and anybody who's local to the area will see that the work started, as I understand it, certainly back in early autumn this year and are now well underway. Just as a pointed question, the whole of this area effectively that's green on this site here sits within the North Cheshire Green Belt. Not all of it's in Cheshire East, some bits of it and obviously along the northern boundary are in Trafford and some of the bits on the eastern end of it actually fall within Greater Manchester and I'm guessing within Manchester's borders. But effectively all of this area along the route in question sits within the Green Belt. And you'll see there's this discussion in the report of why we approved this last time. Because basically it was the best site to locate a compound, to do these works. As any of the other sites along here would equally be in the Green Belt and clearly would not have the accessibility benefits of this particular site. Okay, moving swiftly along. This is a drawing that's in your pack, the kind of distribution of the compound as set up at the moment. So you've got the various areas of hard standing on the eastern side of the boundary here. This line here, just for completeness, is a water main that passes under the site. So you've got these various areas on here, which are basically set out as car parking, various cabins, sort of welfare facilities, that type of thing. The other part of the site, the other least half, if not greater area, is where basically materials are laid down. Although at this moment in time, most of this area is basically one big mound of earth. You'll see some photographs of that shortly. It's basically the topsoil that's been stripped off this area when they laid down the hard surfacing. So when the site is returned to agricultural use, obviously that topsoil will then be put back on this site. Just to give you a couple of parts about its layout. So the access is off the Lim Road at this point here, which it shares with the Cheshire Lounge, which is located down, right down onto the M56 itself. So some distance from the site, but it shares that access. There's a public right-of-way in this location here, on this boundary of the site, and we'll see a photograph of that shortly. So that's right on the western boundary of the site. And again, there's the Bowden Roundabout, as we've already talked about. Okay, so this slide, which is quite important, just shows the distribution of the two contractors on the site. You see, again, there's lots of reference to that in the report. There are two contractors who are currently using this site. Galiford Try, which is the blue area in question here, are the main contractors and they're the people doing the smart motorway works. There's also a smaller element of the site, which is currently occupied by Belford Beatty. And they're the company who are charged with doing some initial ground investigation works on behalf of HS2. So quickly moving through the photographs, this is the site entrance. So it's looking sort of in a due sort of easterly direction, main entrance off Lim Road, with the boundary fencing along the site. You see it's very open, there's virtually no vegetation on this side of the site here. Again, just showing that the site... Again, just showing that's the site access. So you see the woodland belt. Obviously this was taken over the summer months, but this woodland belt along the northern side and the actual roundabout in question sits in this location here. You see the street lighting, obviously the main signage for the roundabout. This is within the site itself, so you remember that's the exit that takes you down towards Cheshire Lounge and this is the main access point into the particular compound itself. And this is the hub of the compound, if you like, with the main areas of hard standing and structures. So this is a shot taken from on the bridge, only five five six. So this is looking in a due westerly direction. Again, the bits we've looked at before are all taken from over in this area here. And it shows a sort of a hint of land at the edge of the road scheme. And then you can see the various bits of compounds, these long sort of office and sort of cabin type structures in this area here, the areas of car parking in the distance. And obviously this is showing where the location of the roundabout is relative to that. This is a shot taken on the rear boundary of the site, taken from the public right-of-way. So if you remember, members, with that last photograph was taken from the five five six, which is in the distance, probably behind where you can see that, the top of a crane in that location. So this is the rear hedge boundary, right at the extreme rear of the site. And you can see here the sort of mound of earth with the fence around it. So this is the topsoil that's being stored up and as you can see now, it's, you see just beyond the snow, it's covered in grass. Been there for some time. And I think this is the final shot that shows you the public right-of-way. So I'm stood with my back to Lim Road here, taking this photograph. And it shows the access gate in here through, into the lane that also forms part of the public right-of-way. So basically the public right-of-way goes through there, over the style and along, and then carries on down along that hedge line there. So it takes a sort of a right turn, if you like, and runs all the way then down to a farm at the far end. I think, members, that's the last shot, so I'll just come out of that and stop sharing. Okay, so just picking up a couple of items, just to bring you to your attention. First of all, there's an update report, I think it's the only one on this agenda. There are principally two items contained within the update report. The first is to spell out the comments of Little Bolington Parish Meeting. And the second one is some information that we received from the applicants in terms of the Galaford Try part of the proposal. So you can see there, there's some discussion there about why they think that the that the compound site needs to be retained beyond what is recommended in the report, beyond sort of March or July twenty twenty-two. And they're suggesting there that it should be retained back through till twenty twenty-four. And there's some sort of dialogue at the end of that in the explanation. The final thing I need to bring to attention, members, is a letter that I received yesterday. This is a letter from High Speed Two. And I'll read it, but wait, and it's not particularly long, so just bear with me on this one. So, Dear Mr Crowder, myself, as you're aware, High Speed Two Limited are currently, through our contractor Balfour BT, undertaking advanced high priority ground investigation works in connection with the western leg of the Crewe to Manchester section of the proposed HS2 railway project. This work is essentially an essential part of the HS2 project as it will help resolve assumptions around ground investigation construction methods and provide greater security of design at an early stage. As well as supporting proposed smart motorway works since March twenty twenty, the compound at Lim Road has also been serviced in the first package of HS2 advanced high priority ground investigation works being undertaken at various locations in Cheshire. A second passage, a package of advanced priority ground investigation works is in the final stages of procurement and will require a similar support arrangement for the Lim Road compound through to the end of twenty twenty-one and early twenty twenty-two. Further, HS2 is undertaking the scoping and design of preliminary route-wide ground investigation package, which will provide information for the preliminary design of HS2 associated infrastructure along the full length of the route from Crewe to Manchester. This is anticipated to be procured in Q1. And I'm assuming that refers to the first quarter of this, of the year twenty twenty-two and will extend to the end of twenty twenty-three, with potential further ground investigations extending into twenty twenty-four stroke twenty twenty-five. Accordingly, as the current temporary planning permission granted for this compound site expires on the thirtieth of September twenty twenty-one, please accept this letter as confirmation that HS2 supports the variation of conditions application submitted by Tatten Estates Management, the extension of the approved temporary period to facilitate ongoing use of the construction compound to support the HS2 Phase Two B GI programme, GI standing for ground investigation. So, members, I think that's all the documents. Just, maybe just to talk very quickly, just to the two aspects of this application. So we have an existing compound that is being used primarily by Galaford Try in connection with the smart motorway works. That permission expires in September this year. Now, for the reasons set out in the report, the programme has been put back and they are now anticipating, as again is set out in the report, that substantial works for that will be completed by March or July, depending on which figure you use, of this year. And you'll see the report recommends that we grant permission to extend it to the July date to allow them to complete that. Now, clearly they will still, by all accounts, be further works that they will need to complete beyond that date. And you can see that set out in the, sorry, the update report. So snagging and landscaping works and the like. What we're not quite sure of is whether the whole compound is required for those works. And you appreciate this is a six hectare piece of land, which clearly there is local opposition to. It has an impact, it's a big site. So we are not convinced at the moment that we've seen sufficient evidence to extend the period beyond that date. And as again it says in the update report, clearly it's within their gift to come back and talk to us nearer the time. And if that is necessary and the whole compound is necessary, then we will need to look at that. Just dealing with the HS2 matter. HS2 effectively have utilised the site, as they've said now, for a year or so for part of their investigation works. However, we've not seen any very special circumstances for why they have to be on this site. You've seen explanations in terms of the smart motorway, which are understood. However, as it sets out in there, these works go all the way from Crewe into Manchester. So why this site? And because this is a high bar, this is a very special circumstances in the Green Belt, we need to be convinced this is the right site for HS2 to be located. Clearly it makes sense at the moment, while the site is being used for them to occupy a small part of the site. I don't think we can dispute the logic of that. But in terms of extending the period, uncertainly extending the site area, that's something at the moment, we don't have the evidence to suggest that we would recommend that, members. So with that in mind, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Crowder, that's fantastic. Can I now call upon councillor Kate Parkinson, the ward councillor, to address the board? You have five minutes, Kate.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much Chair and good afternoon councillors. I am Kate Parkinson, I'm the ward councillor for Hylee. I have some grave concerns about the proposed, sorry, I have some grave concerns about the proposal to extend the site compound by the Bowden Roundabout. The area was originally designated and justified by Balfour BT as a temporary compound site for the M fifty-six to M six link road scheme. Then the site was used again for the M fifty-six smart motorway project, which is reportedly due to finish in spring twenty twenty-two. But as you've heard, it will be extended to July. And the site to be decommissioned and the land returned to its original state. Costaine then made a further amendment to the application eighteen backslash three two one nine M for a non-material amendment stating short-term use for the local site investigation works relating to HS2. The application was never supposed to be extended for a long-term project, which is, in my opinion, an inappropriate use of planning consent as this opens up the possibilities for further amendments and extensions in the future. However, there has been yet another application made for a further five years, stating the wish to convert to a substantially material amendment and including the need for long-term use as an HS2 compound site. However, the current HS2 plans do not indicate this area as a site compound. My residents are seriously concerned about the detrimental effect to the land and surrounding area that this planning application will have passed. There are enough site compounds designated for the HS2 already in my ward, spanning from various sites to Hylee on to Pickme. This is the fourth application made on this site. Where is the consideration for the Green Belt land that Cheshire East is so passionate about protecting? I refer to point one point three of the current policy PG three, which states the safeguarding of the countryside from encroachment. Point two, within the Green Belt, planning permission will not be granted for inappropriate development except in very special circumstances in according with national policy. I believe this planning application to be inappropriate as the original application states the land to be used for short-term use and that would be returned back to its original state upon completion of work. The impact of the Green Belt will be devastating and the land will struggle to return to recover with any more hard standings and temporary buildings. And I feel this does not comply with the current planning conditions of returning it to agricultural use. Please refer back to planning application eighteen backslash three one two nine M, which states recommendations, one, temporary three-year consent, and two, land be reinstated to agricultural land at the end of the approved period with all hard surfaces removed. My worry is that the site will now be unable to recover enough for it to be considered Green Belt and this will open up the possibility for further development in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Parkinson. Do we have any questions from members to councillor Parkinson? Okay, thank you very much councillor Parkinson. If you could turn your microphone and, hello? Right, okay. I will now move to speaker, Mr Mike Reed, the clerk to Little Bolington Parish Council, to address the board.
Thank you Chair, can I be heard?
Mr Reed, we can hear you fine and you have five minutes speaking time.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation to speak, that's very good of you. My name is Mike Reed, I'm clerk to Little Bolington Parish Meeting and I'm speaking on their behalf. Your planning policy for this land designates it as Green Belt, not for development, pardon me. But that policy is being undermined by a series of exceptions, temporary permissions, amendments and time extensions. The land is being effectively removed from the Green Belt permanently. This application, as we've heard, is the fourth exception to date. The first was for the construction of the M fifty-six to M six link road. The second, in September two thousand and eighteen, was for the M fifty-six smart motorway project, perfectly justified, I believe, on a temporary basis. But then there was a third exception granted in April last year, which was in the form of a variation of the smart motorway permission to allow a short-term temporary site compound for HS2 investigations. And now a fourth exception is proposed to allow the extension of those site investigation works right up to the year twenty twenty-five. And the applicant states in his documents that permanent planning permission is justified. I believe there are some serious questions about these two recent applications which brought in the HS2 project onto this land. The application last year in April was presented as a minor amendment for short-term use with completion before September this year. This was clearly at that time intended for just a small initial part of the ongoing site investigations on a major project which clearly carries on up to beyond the year twenty thirty. But the current application now states permanent planning permission is required and claims this is considered entirely justified and reasonable. Well, if it is, then it wasn't reasonable to apply for temporary short-term permission in April last year. And that's what convinced your council to grant that permission. The same application in April last year was not put out for consultation by Little Bolington Parish Meeting and neighbouring parish councils. So there was no opportunity to make those comments at that time. Buildings and hard standings seem to have been erected on the current compound outside of the areas indicated on the approved plan. And I would be pleased if you could take a look at that to see whether I'm right or wrong on that point. In the current application, a number of documents were omitted on the planning website and not available for those wishing to comment. And these included the applicant's covering letter, which contains key information and the plans for the, the plans, the actual drawings for the proposed compound. But finally, the design plans drawn up by HS2 Limited for the overall scheme do not allocate this piece of land as a site compound. They do, they do show site compounds, one in Hylee and one on a site near Lim, but no justification is being given for selecting this additional land for another site compound for HS2. Overriding all of these problems, to me, is the big question. How should the planning of a major national infrastructure project be undertaken? I assume your planning officers can advise, I'm no expert. But I'm certain that such projects should not inch forward on the basis of planning consents given in the form of non-material amendments, temporary short-term time extensions. HS2 is a major, long-term, multi-billion pound national infrastructure project. It'll extend over decades. It requires a long-term planning solution which is thoroughly researched and tested. This should include provision for site compounds over the entire duration of the scheme. It simply is not, I believe, appropriate to approve this temporary application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr Reed. Do we have any questions for Mr Reed? Okay, I have a question. Both you and councillor Parkinson have made reference to a permanent application. Now, I've just gone through this and it's just saying to me here that this is temporary consent until the end of two thousand and twenty-two. Land to be reinstated to agricultural land at the end of this period with hard surfaces removed. Where's the permanent?
Two places, if I may. One is in the covering letter, which as I say was not originally available on the website. There is a statement in there that the applicant believes that permanent planning permission is appropriate, but as, because of concern in the community, has limited it to five years. So it is a temporary application, I accept. I just wanted to draw attention to that reference to it being necessary or justified as permanent. But I also understood that the application is for an extension to the year twenty twenty-five. I specifically saw that in the documents. Whether that's been modified, I don't know.
The recommendations here say temporary consent until the end of twenty twenty-two.
Indeed.
I asked this of the officers as well, Mr Reed, because it's a little confusing. Does anybody else have any questions? No, Mr Reed, thank you very much for your participation. If you could put your microphone and your camera off, that would be great. I could now call on Mr Jonathan Burns, representing the applicant. You have three minutes, Mr Burns.
Thank you, I hope everyone can see and hear me.
Yes, can see and hear fine.
Excellent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the three applicants, the Tatten Estate, Galaford Try and Balfour BT. My name is Jonathan Burns and I'm associate planner at Pegasus Group. As set out in your officer's report, the application proposals seek the continued use of the site as a construction compound by Galaford Try to serve the M fifty-six smart motorway works. No new development is proposed. And this application is simply to retain what is up there already in accordance with the consent previously granted by this committee. Since our previous application, the M fifty-six works have been substantially delayed, with work having only recently commenced instead of in spring twenty nineteen as originally planned. A small part of the site is also in use as a compound for Balfour BT as part of their initial ground investigations in the local area along the planned route for where HS2 meets Northern Powerhouse Rail. All three of these investments are key projects for this council and the LEPS Sustainable and Inclusive Growth Plans, as such, is a very small site, will play an important role in helping to deliver critical infrastructure and significant benefits both locally and nationally. We therefore welcome your officer's support for the continued temporary consent on the site in order to support this key public investment and ensure safe and easy access for the workforce in a location that would avoid harm to residential amenity and makes best use of resources in the form of the existing compound. Given this, the applicants ask for member support for the timescales of this temporary use to be extended beyond that setting, that's set out in your officer's report. Further discussions with Galaford Try confirm that whilst the current programme envisages a completion of the smart motorway construction works in spring or early summer twenty twenty-two, this does not make an allowance for the demobilisation of the site, its reinstatement or any contingency or delay to the project. Even if the works were to complete in line with the current programme, permission Even if the works were to complete in line with the current programme, permission ceasing in July 2022 would not allow for the necessary demobilisation of the site post construction or the subsequent reinstatement. Based on the current programme and assuming it is completed on time, consent would be required to the end of 2022 to allow for this. If we were required to obtain a further planning consent to allow for this, it would need to be submitted very quickly in order to ensure that the contractors are able to cooperate from the facility in accordance with their programmes. This would also unnecessarily take up officers and members' valuable time. Further, the published programme is a best case scenario. The complexity of smart motorway works means that delays are not only commonplace but par for the course, even without further pressures associated with the current pandemic. For example, the M62 junction 10 to 12 works have just opened almost nine months late. Our clients originally applied for a longer temporary consent on the site and have worked with officers to strike a reasonable balance. In that same spirit, we would request that the use of the site is permitted to extend to at least the end of 2023 to allow for demobilisation, reinstatement and some modest delay to the programme, thereby providing some certainty to the contractor, its workers and supporting the delivery of the important infrastructure projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Burns. Do we have any questions for Mr Burns? No, I have a question for Mr Burns. Mr Burns, has your client, and I presume is that Tatten?
That's correct.
Are they looking for permanent permission for this site?
No.
In any shape or form?
No, the application has always been for a temporary consent. I'm not the author, no, it's my company, the author of the letter that's being referred to. So yeah, that's not the position.
I will ask the officers about that letter. Does anybody else have any questions? Councillor Jeffrey?
Thanks Chair. Mr Burns, just looking at your your P6 programme that's on the portal, just wondering where to the end of 2023, none of that's that date isn't shown anywhere on your programme. So we've got phase two construction activities leading up to the May 2022. Then you've got post construction to May 22. And then the next is section three works, maintenance and aftercare works, which ends in July 24. So I'm just wondering how this all fits in. You're not allowed for any contingency in your, is this a best case programme or I'm just wondering what you're basing the end of 2023 on?
The end of 2023 is to allow for some delay to the programme which is up to the end of stage two. The stage three works that you've referred to are maintenance works.
So you're allowing a year and a half for delays from 25th of May 2022 to the end of 23, is that what you're saying?
No, because the additional time is actually required in order to demobilise the site, which is a period of about 12 weeks.
That's not on your programme though, is it?
And then actually reinstate the site, which the construction of the site took about four to five months.
So that's not on your programme?
That, I mean, that programme is not mine, that programme is Galaford Try's. I understand that there is actually a period of time which allows for that demobilisation of 12 weeks.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey, are you happy there?
Not at all, Chair, but.
Okay. Mr Crowder, do you wish to come back on anything that's been mentioned by the public speakers and members?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of very quick points, hopefully Chair, just to clear up the planning permissions. Obviously, both the parish meeting and the local councillor spoke obviously about the being four planning permissions on the site, just to clarify exactly what they are. The first one was not a planning permission. The first one which set the compound up as set out in the report was an Act of Parliament. So that was basically a permission granted by Parliament to enable them to set that compound up. So that was nothing to do with Cheshire East. That was not one of our, that was not one of our applications. So it bypassed us, if you like, through that process. The first application Cheshire East involved in was the one granted by SPB, which is 2018, which granted them the three year consent for the compound for the smart motorway works. There's then reference then to the non material amendments. And basically what that did was to change the layout of the compound. So in other words, the compound that was approved, they put in a non material amendment to change the layout, it did not change any of the timescales. So I can make that absolutely clear. The timescales that were approved back in 2018, that they finished it, you know, the three year consent etc, did not change. Hence, the non material aspect of it was, it was a layout change within the site effectively, different distribution of cabins and car parking, which made frankly little difference to the overall impact of that. And obviously then we then had this application before us today, which is not seeking a permanent consent. I understand where that comment's come from because there is reference to it in one of the supporting statements, but the application is not seeking permanent consent here. It is seeking a temporary consent, but it is that they are seeking a temporary consent till 2024. And in fact, I think even members, I think it's referenced in the report. I think the original statement by the applicant seeks, this has allowed the compound to operate until December 2025, therefore extending the life of the permission by four years. And that's second paragraph, second full paragraph of top page 71. So hopefully that clarifies the permission Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Crowder. Do we have any questions for the officer? With regards to this application? No? Well, I do, because this permanent, the mention of a permanent consent worries me. Where is this permanent consent coming from Adrian? Because I can't see that anywhere.
Chair, just to clarify again, the reference to permanent consent is in the applicant's supporting statement, which has already been referenced. It basically says they think they could justify a permanent consent. However, and again, it's been stated by one of the earlier speakers, in view of local opposition to the scheme, their proposal is to apply for temporary consent. So just make that, this application does not propose permanent consent, but the applicant is basically, it was in the narrative that came with the application, if you like, but it's not what the proposal's for.
And this letter came in, this letter came in late, I take it?
No, the letter came in unfortunately, Chair, it was not rendered correctly, sorry to use the term. It was put on the system and unfortunately it wasn't viewable in the format it was. That was corrected relatively early in the process, but unfortunately it was not there with the initial documents. So it was submitted with the application, but it wasn't on the viewable public section immediately as it should have been.
And in the recommendations, it says 2022.
Yes.
Land, at the end of July 2022, land to reinstate agricultural land. Now, is this, will there be a chance of, or are we expecting an extension to this? Or is this what's going to happen?
Okay, well, from what Mr Burns said, they are suggesting that they need at least till the end of 2022 to complete all the works and decommission the compound. That's what's been suggested today. So the snagging works and whatever, so at least to the end of 2022. And he was also suggesting, I think councillor Jeffrey was asking the questions there, he was suggesting that because of delays, it could be beyond that date. Now, clearly that's up to yourselves, members of committee, to decide what's appropriate here. We're suggesting that the evidence before us at the moment is that it's certainly till July would be appropriate. If you feel it's appropriate to avoid an application coming in to continue that to the end of the year, then clearly it's within your gift to extend that. Beyond that date, I would suggest we're struggling in terms of evidence before us today to justify that.
Thank you very much. Let me ask you this question and it's about speculation really more than anything else. This gets consent to 2022. It's looking like there's going to be a chance that this is going to spill over into 2023. Does this, along with the applicant's letter, which is mentioned in the applicant's letter, where they say they could justify going for permanent consent, does that help their cause or does the green belt override that?
The green belt is still the green belt. This site does not get taken out of the green belt because of a temporary contractor's compound. So each time the arguments need to be made to retain the compound.
I don't disagree with that, but I'm just thinking of what we went through before with the previous application, whereas this site is actually being used. So I understand what you're saying about green belt, but what I don't want is a developer coming back with a speculative application which says, we've been using this now for X amount of years, blah, 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 blah. Where do we stand if we refuse that now on green belt? Would that, if they took us to a, to an appeal, if we refused it on green belt grounds, would that make a difference or would the green belt overrule it?
Well, the green belt grounds are what they are in terms of very special circumstances. Just to talk in terms of planning policy, the justification for this is it's the best location for all the right reasons for a compound to work on the smart motorway works. So that's the green belt argument being made here. And we agree in the circumstances as of today that to complete those smart motorway works, this is the best location for a compound. Now, if that compound gets delayed, sorry, if the works are delayed, then unfortunately the only alternative to that, which is why we have to live in the real world in this respect, the only alternative is to find another location for a compound. And I'm talking here about the Galaford Try here, we're not talking about this too.
Can I just, can I just? I think we might be talking at cross purposes. What I'm saying is, the longer, if the longer that site is there, is there a justification for a permanent application to come in? And if an application comes in for that site, for a permanent application, they might wish to put small industrial units on it or a warehouse on it or whatever, does the green belt, in your opinion, stop that from happening? Or does the fact that they have used that site for a number of years indicate that a decision would go more for them than against them?
Well, what they are going to argue is clearly down to themselves in terms of, yes, the site isn't open countryside as it stands at this moment in time, it is a contractor's compound. So anybody who's going to make an argument is going to try and use that. But I would, I would say very, very strongly, Chair, that in my opinion, this site is still in the North Cheshire Green Belt. This application does not change that and green belt policy would still exclude any permanent development of that site.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, councillor Jeffrey, then councillor Edgar.
Sorry Chair, I think mine was earlier, was it? I can't remember the question.
Oh, it's an historic one, so I'm sorry mate.
Yeah, I think so, I think, cheers.
Okay, councillor Edgar's happy. I think Mr Malcolm wishes to come in with a little point of clarification.
Sorry, sorry Chair, it's just to assist Adrian, I think he's probably got to the point anyway. So it was just to make the point that obviously the temporary consent is given and that will give no weight to any permanent permission in the future, because we'd have to assess that, you know, the fact it's temporary is kind of probably part of the reason why they're very special circumstances. So if we had something that was a permanent site, arguably, you know, the very special circumstances would probably not be there. So yeah, I don't think in terms of, we have had other sites, construction sites across Cheshire East previously, site compounds, I think there was some that were in connection with the upgrade of the West Combe's mainline. I'm thinking of a site somewhere near Chelford, for example, it was right next to railway. And we got all sorts of inquiries and I think even applications to say, can we build something on the area of hard standing that's been there for now for several, well, I think it was a few years. And we just said, well, no, because actually it's a green field. So I think in terms of, we would look at it on its merits, but the very fact that this is a temporary use is part of the very special circumstances because we know it can be reverted back to effectively the green field. But its designation as green belt will remain unless it is, unless the land is physically taken out of the green belt, which is pretty unlikely given its location. Next Chair.
Yeah, you keep muting me. Right, councillor Redstone.
Thank you Chair. My question is for Mr Malcolm. Can HS2 take over this permission and use this site for their uses? Or is it particular to this extension to the 56?
I don't believe it was a personal position. I don't believe it was a permission that was given to any particular end user, if you like, so I don't think it was limited to Balfour BT or Galaford Try. In terms of whether HS2 can take over, well, as far as I know, this isn't a site that was, that forms part of the actual bill for HS2. I mean, that would come forward, you know, that's part of the phase two B, which obviously we've still got, you know, still is underway, but so it's not something that at the moment they could issue a direction in some form to take over this land as it stands at the moment. In terms of HS2A, which is the bit from Birmingham to Crewe, there are site compounds that are part of actually the dedicated route for HS2. So in effect, they form almost part of the HS2 bill. And I'm not aware that this application, this site should say fits part of that. But in its current form, you know, no, unless, unless there's a direction given to the council, which would be highly unusual in these circumstances, then it's not something that HS2 could come along and dictate that they require that land, it would require some legislative framework behind it. But in terms of an end user, we're not necessarily restricting this to end users per se, it's just, it's a site compound. And I think that was the point Adrian mentioned earlier, that it wasn't, we didn't necessarily give a consent to Balfour BT or Galaford Try, it's just Balfour BT have started to use part of it for their, for their own purposes. So it's not restricted in that way.
Okay, so can this continue to be extended to other users?
When you say extended in terms of its timeframe?
Yes, can they apply for another application to extend this to another period of time and then another period of time and so on?
Yeah, I mean, that's the point. So the difficulty is, is when you've got an established, well, not established, but when you've got something that's been there a while already, it is the point that I think the parish and others have started to sort of say, oh, well, it's been there a long time already, it's always been a site compound as long as I've known it. But the reality is behind it are a series of temporary permissions and each of those temporary permissions has to be justified on the grounds of very special circumstances. So it's almost like there's a, there's a, there's an audit trail to establish why that site is what it is. I think for us, we're not necessarily saying if there is a genuine justified need for this, then fine, but lay that out to us properly. I think you've heard some confusing, perhaps confusing comments over the length of time. And I think, you know, I also point to, again, these are not necessarily parties that are involved in this one, but the junction 17 works for smart motorway in Zambach. Members will see that site component is still there. And now that's a different one, that was done under permitted development. But you can see that that's, you know, people are already looking at that thing, oh, well, it's always been a site compound. Well, no, it hasn't, it should be returned to a green field and we're actually chasing the highways agency, or highways England to revert it back. Because these things do, almost by osmosis, they do sort of creep up and people think, oh, well, it's not green belt or it's not countryside, it's not a green field anymore. So it's just that justification that we need and I think that's the bit that we feel is missing. And whether it's, I don't like using the phrase as such, but whether there's a element of sort of laziness, thinking, well, there's a site there, why can't we just use that? I'm afraid that's not how we work it in terms of the planning terms, because it has to be very special. And as Adrian alluded to earlier on, it's a very high bar to have something in the green belt, you know, it's one of the foremost areas of protection in the country. So it's not something that you can just come along and think, well, there's a site compound there, we can use that and we'll have it for another couple of years. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we've got no more questions, so we need to go into debate. Does anybody wish to open debate or move? Councillor Edgar.
Thank you Chair. I find myself here caught between a rock and a hard place.
If we deny consent to an extension until July twenty twenty two, then we're going to force the developer to turn it back into a green field and put an application in somewhere else, potentially in the green belt, to put another site for that twelve months. I am concerned about the word permanence and extensions beyond twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. Is when does a temporary permission not become temporary when you keep applying for further extensions? I am minded at the moment to stick with the recommendation up to twenty twenty two. And if they need to extend for a few weeks or a few months beyond that, then I'm sure officers could say, well, yeah, okay, that sounds reasonable to the end of the year, to finish off and do your reinstatement. But to keep coming forward potentially in the future, as we can see, I'm having difficulties with which way to go on this. And I think I'll leave it to the debate to make a conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Edgar. Councillor Jeffrey.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, where I'm at on this is that I don't think, I think we have no option but to extend. And I think it would be unreasonable not to. But I, I don't believe that the end of July twenty twenty two is going to be, is realistic or sufficient. Likewise, I think that the, the dates that the applicant was banding around at the end of twenty three is unrealistic, well, unnecessary as well. So I would be minded to provide an extension to the end of twenty twenty two. Their programme shows that they're supposed to be finishing work, finishing construction on the twenty fifth of May, twenty twenty two. Within that period between, they've got a post-construction period between twenty eighth of March twenty two and twenty fifth of May, twenty two, twenty two. So that should include some decamping. But even so, the projects being projects and I've worked on major projects, that it will extend beyond that programme. That's going to be a best case scenario. So to say the issue of having a another application, when we know it's going to come, I would suggest that we have it until, we approve until the end of twenty twenty two. By doing that, it makes it realistic. And although I would imagine the cost of another planning application is insignificant in the delay costs associated with the major project, it does introduce a major risk to their project in that they might not get a planning permission for an extension due to the special circumstances. So it focuses the mind and focuses the programme and it should appear on a risk register somewhere that that is a pretty hard date that they have to stick to. So that's where I'm at at the moment, but I'll listen to the rest of the debate.
Thank you very much, councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Dean.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think councillor Jeffrey has stolen my notes because I was going to say virtually exactly the same things, make the same point. There is the benefit, as councillor Jeffrey has mentioned, of focusing their minds to actually try and get the work finished and so they can vacate by the end of twenty two. And I do think that we ought to extend from July to the end of December twenty two to give them that extra leeway. But again, if that is not going to be the case for some disastrous reason, a bit like last year's Covid nineteen disaster, then they can always apply for another extension and you know, these are big companies with their own planning people. It's not going to be the end of the world. So I'm quite happy with going with extending this to December twenty twenty two.
Thank you, councillor Dean. Councillor Farrell.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think it's already just been said by councillor Dean and councillor Jeffrey before them. Going off the submissions from the applicant, I don't, I can't see this being ended in July twenty twenty two. So you know, there's going to be another, well, I foresee there's going to be another application coming through to further extend it. I think we just need to be, it's obviously disappointing for the local residents and councillor Parkinson, but you know, it's pragmatic approach. It's the best site, obviously the best site for all the works to be carried out. And I would probably support a extension, to be honest, a sports extension beyond the end of twenty twenty two, because going off the initial applicant's estimation of December twenty twenty five. And I think it, just to save the heartache of going through this all over again for the local residents and the councillor, I'd probably just extend it to twenty twenty five, to be honest, just to make sure they've got the sufficient time and save the hassle of having to come back through further extensions, which undoubtedly have to be, you know, approved anyway. So I might support, but with a probably a further extension.
Thank you very much, councillor Farrell. I will go to councillor Edgar in a second, but I would just like to say, I am, like councillor Edgar, caught between a rock and a hard place. I feel that there's more to this than meets the eye. I worry about the fact that this will undoubtedly, undoubtedly go beyond twenty twenty two. We will be coming back with another extension period and another extension period. I don't see HS2 wanting to give this compound up. And it will become three years, five years, ten years, twenty years, and then it will be, oh, you know, let's put it for the permanent application. One of the words that councillor, that day, that Mr Malcolm used inadvertently and then changed his mind quick was established, which is worrying. Not the fact that he used it, but again, like Mr Malcolm was inferring, people do become to think these things are established. At the moment, I'm mindful to not to agree to this extension. I'm really worried about it. Councillor Edgar.
Thank you, Chair. Whilst I was willing to support the July twenty twenty two, and I am minded not to support the December twenty twenty two, but I can hear the arguments. But certainly beyond that date would be unacceptable. It's a temporary permission for three years, being extended for an extra year. And the difference between July and December to me doesn't appear to be all that, that matter all that much, if you with me. But certainly beyond December twenty two, it is no longer, in my opinion, a temporary permission. It is a further, it's getting very close to permanence. Thank you.
And the twenty year rule, I'm worried me. So we have a proposal there to accept the recommendations which are set out on, lost my page number. Page seventy seven. Do we have a second for those?
Mr Chair, I didn't hear any proposal. Have I missed something?
Councillor Redger moved, I thought councillor Redger moved.
No, I said I would support. I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Right, so we need, we need somebody to either, we either go with or without the recommendation, so.
I can, I can propose something slightly in the middle. I would propose that we grant an extension to December twenty twenty two with all the, any conditions which are already on this temporary permission, continuing until that date.
Okay, we, can you, councillor Jeffrey, can you verbalise your seconding for that, please?
Yes, Chair, happy to second that proposal for December twenty two.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any more people that wish to add before I move to the vote? No, okay, so the recommendation is we're moving the consent until the end of December twenty twenty two, not July twenty two. Recommendation two, the land being reinstated to agricultural land at the end of the approved period, with all land standing be removed, stays, three, and approved plans. I will now go to.
Sorry, Chairman, I think the update had an amendment. Can it just clarify?
Oh, right. Adrian, did the amendment have an update?
It had some, it just had some wording in regard to the approved plans condition, Chair. So if I find my update reports, spare me a second. Okay, so at the end of the update report, at bottom of page four, the development hereby approved shall be carried out substantially in accordance with the proposed site compound plan zero zero one, Rev nine, with no structures or material storage exceeding a maximum height of four metres in height. So that's, that's the wording as suggested.
So with that wording, councillor Dean, are you happy with that and your twenty twenty two December?
Happy with that wording, Chair.
Thank you very much. And councillor Jeffrey, your seconding, are you happy with that wording?
Yes, Chair.
Right, with that, we will move to the vote. I will go down alphabetically. So first person on the list is councillor Dean. Can we, we're either for, against or not voting?
For, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Edgar.
And it's for, please.
Thank you. Councillor Farrell.
For.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hobbin.
For.
Councillor Jeffrey.
For.
Councillor Morton. Oh, councillor Morton's gone. Councillor Redstone.
Not voting, Chair.
Okey dokey. And councillor Williams.
For.
Thank you very much.
You're going to, Chair?
No. No, I don't want, I don't want to vote on that one.
That's carried, Chair. Six in favour, two not voting.
So that's six in favour, two not voting, and then recommendations have been approved. That brings us to the end of what has been a very trying meeting. And I must thank everybody that has took part for their patience. It has not been the easiest of meetings. I'd like to thank the IT team and Sarah and Helen Davis from Democratic Services for their efforts in getting the meeting up and running again, considering the problems that we had. So, thank you, everybody. Stay safe. And we will be again in two weeks' time, I think.